There he is. Um, let the record show that we do have all directors present this evening.
I have your volume on.
No, my volume's off, so.
Is that what you want?
Not here.
There he is.
There he is. Says I'm the chief.
Oh, I can hear you.
All right, I think we need you muted, please.
Right there.
All right, um, welcome all the visitors this evening. Is there any public comment? I see none. We'll move right on into first item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. Or approval of the agenda, I'm sorry. Do we have the ability to move a couple items around?
Yeah.
We have to get visitors on online and in the audience.
Yep.
So if we could, I would like to move. Um, uh, where are we at here? Educational nine point oh, nine point one, two, and three, uh, to the beginning. Uh, we could put that in, uh, right after the students, right before finance. Okay, and then also when we get to finance, if we would do six point four first. Yeah, that works. I don't have a problem with that. That will entertain a motion for approval of the agenda. We have a motion to approve the agenda as amended by Jacob Bosler, seconded by Director Marcus. Is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? I oppose. The agenda is approved. Um, three point oh, the consent agenda, uh, all the items, the minutes from our last meeting. Finance, uh, checks and lawyers, along with payroll checks and direct deposits going through in your packet. Does anyone have any questions regarding the consent agenda? Motion to approve consent agenda. We have the motion by Director Christian, seconded by Director Bosler to approve the consent agenda. Is anyone opposed to that? Seeing none there for by unanimous consent, the consent agenda is approved. Right on into, um, public comments. Anything this evening? Any house that? All right, we'll move right into our staff, student, and constituent reports. Ms. Amanda and student leaders, you guys are up.
I'm getting there, you guys. I'm getting there, Amanda.
My name is Kevin Bosler.
Mine is Peyton Road.
We're in Mrs. Olson's fourth grade class. We raised one thousand eight hundred forty dollars by selling pom pom cake pops and clothes for the Hound headquarters fundraiser.
There it is.
So we purchased two chairs, couch, plants, golf mindset wall art, pillows, wobble chairs, high audience, flexible seating, window curtains with positive messages, and an end table with a charging station. So we put it together, we had a lot of fun, and we worked together a lot. Everybody likes the old work, the round cushions and wobble chairs. They like that because they use it. They sit in it and they wait for their friends before recess, also because it gets really cold outside and they don't want to go out.
Um, the lunch hook he goes with the, with, with our lunch, with Superintendent itself was very good.
I'd agree. I'd agree.
And we were thinking about changing the school lunch and adding little waters with the lunch.
Um, the playground was the main thing we talked about with Superintendent itself. Um, we, so the school board is still thinking about, um, laptop for the playground and then there, we need a space, we love the new playground, but we need a space to go when it's windy because everybody crams behind that rock wall and it gets way too crowded. Thank you for letting us have a meeting with you.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
The upcoming ideas for the rest of the year, we want to do a tree trolley for the teachers. We want to do another town headquarters thing, and we're thinking about a school supply drive. Thank you for letting us have you today. Do you have any questions?
Question? Yeah, no questions.
I gotta add one more thing that's based, I've seen it used for the small reading groups. Um, I, I saw some classroom bullets in that I agree to, so it's been being used in many ways.
Looks really nice.
Yeah, keep up the good work, guys.
I saw it before the rug and the artwork and the plants too. I thought that looked nice, but that looks even better.
Any other questions for them? All right. Thank you very much, guys. Is there anyone here from High School Student Council this week or this month? Nope. Okay. Moving on to nine point one. We'll move on to nine point one, uh, the art trip in March of twenty twenty four. Mr. McCollum.
Mr. McCollum, the floor is yours.
I think we have that mic.
You have it already?
Yep.
It was in our board packet.
We sent, you got it to me, I got it to them.
Oh, you did?
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Scratch, scratch paper. Cut it up.
So we're, uh, hoping that, uh, you improve a trip for this, about this time next year, March fourth through eleventh to Paris, France. The, uh, trip would include, uh, obviously a visit to the Louvre, um, biggest art museum in the world. Also a trip to Versailles, along, along with a bunch of other side trips. It would be a very valuable trip for our students, especially our, our kids, but anybody. I've got over forty people that have told me they would love to go on this trip. We get going. A number of families want to go. It should be a really cool family, um, experience. I've been to Paris a number of times. Um, I've always been requested by the French in this. Everyone says the French are rude and mean, but that's not been my experience. They're quite friendly and accommodating. Especially if you can roll through a few French words, so. Anyway, uh, through the tar package, it gives them itinerary for each day. It's pretty packed itinerary. Florica is a group that, Marguerite has used a number of times and has a lot of experience. That's any questions so far?
Those are the only dates you can go, Mike?
Well, that's the trip that makes, uh, we can get that price at those dates.
My only concern is, it's like smack dab in the middle of some tournaments, there's speech going on, correct, Marguerite? Possibly could have basketball.
Yes.
Boys and girls, I mean, that's my only concern, I guess.
Some of the families that want to go would, I mean, obviously they have other dates ahead of time, so they wouldn't sign up for it if they wanted to participate in those events. The Paris in the summer is basically hot, so it's not really a great time to go there. Not always like, you know, hot.
Yeah. It was a couple of years ago that you had done to Chicago for a trip, right?
Yeah, we, uh, we did that, uh, that was a blast. We got to see some highlights. Um, we also would like to go to Minneapolis this spring. We have about three thousand dollars in our budget and we could probably raise another thousand pizza sales and other donations. Uh, I just want to make that like a two day trip, uh, ride, ride, mini bus down to the cities, see these two stars, the water, et cetera. And I also designed the, uh, Orlando, Gasteel Memorial Garden, what, uh, Arthur Paul Murray killed. Uh, it's quite a, quite a moving spot. It's be fun to visit, see, um, what public art can do.
Mike, do you know the, what, what kind of cost difference if we tried to find a later date, like between end of March, first of April, or somewhere in there?
French trip?
Yep.
Uh, well, we have to, I don't know that. If we don't sign up by the thirtieth, then the price goes up.
Is that something that could be researched? Like, we go, we could still potentially prove it by the thirtieth, but on a different set of dates with a different set of costs to you. Can you get us that information?
I would, I think, um, if they don't sign up by the thirtieth, then the price goes up, up March this year.
Okay.
But it's a year, they have a year to finance it themselves.
Right. Do you plan any fundraisers or anything?
No, it's all self-financed.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
What would you need from the school district to make this happen?
We have to prove if we trap out of state.
Well.
Then obviously out of country.
I'm, I'm wondering if you're looking for bus transportation or if you charter, if it's all. Not for the French trip, for the Minneapolis trip, I don't need that mini bus. Probably quit the hotel for one evening. Okay, I want to get to the airport for the student summer. For Fargo, or Fargo Airport, so we have to, families would have to drive. You said you got about forty students or how? Yeah, I've, I've, yeah, people have heard about it and I bet you probably have another ten about that, but that's just students. Some of the students have whole families that want to go, so it would be quite a, quite a bunch. So forty students that have shown interest, but it's probably not going to. I would imagine maybe.
What do you mean when you say whole families?
Like grandma, grandpa, mom and dad.
Is that what this school trip are? I guess I'm, I don't know if we've ever done that in the past, you know, I have.
Just.
It's just been students and, and chaperones, I think. Might need a little more info on that. What's your chaperone? Do you have a planned chaperone ratio?
Well, for every five, for every five people that sign up to get another chaperone or a non, so would be my hope that some of these family members would be chaperones. Didn't end up with more young ladies than young men on these things, so it's nice to have, um, email chaperones. Our Chicago trip was eight young ladies and one young man. I don't think I've counted the nine that there's happened in my life. Especially in those ways, I must have, it was interesting.
Do you think you could reach out to them and see chat pricing on other dates and get that back?
What other dates would, uh?
Probably have to be later in March. Like, like, well, I mean, just corresponding dates would be, this week would still be out potentially, you know, I mean. But the last week in March through about first week in April, somewhere in that cat, you know, range would be more ideal. But I don't know how, like, Marguerite would, the section speeches, the twelfth, that's a corresponding date.
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth, yeah. So it's always going to be right around there.
Yeah.
This is the first time that speech actually states which has been moved through last weekend in April, which just depending upon where Easter lies for.
Yeah.
Um, for state, they had to change it, push it to the end of the month because of Ramadan, I think.
Yeah.
So that has changed this year, but the section is still the same on April thirteenth. Where are the others?
Like, is there a minimum, uh, for, for this price? Five, five people, all the five.
Six?
Five, six.
My, my administrative recommendation will be that he does a little more homework, reports that to Mr. Denarski, and Mr. Denarski can bring that forward to myself. I could share with, sure, Tupong, and we could maybe move it along that way, some way, shape, or form.
And probably have to, especially, yeah, real quick.
We could have a quick special meeting before the thirtieth.
And what information other than changing, changing the dates are looking for?
I think we want to find out more about the, the family piece of it.
Kind of, in need or?
Yeah, I guess this needs to be student-driven. I mean, that, that needs to be the focus of it. It needs, that needs to be the reason for it, that we're doing this on behalf of students. Um, we're not in the travel agency business, and, and I'm not suggesting that's the route this is going, but, uh, we need a, a a decent number of students participating in it. And I, I don't know even, I don't know how the board feels about family because we're going to hear a presentation here later. Um, but that has a little different twist to it, but there are some family pieces to that one as well that we're going to, nine point three.
Mike, is that pricing based off because it's going through the school?
Because you get the pricing from the Explorica or whatever, right?
Right, yeah. But they, they only work with, um, it's a student, it's for students.
And that's who we used on the Puerto Rico trip, correct?
Okay. Do you mind if I add anything?
Wait, whoa, whoa.
No.
He needs to acknowledge you.
Oh.
Go ahead.
Okay, so in the, in addition to the chaperone per six ratio, uh, this, there's a student cost and then there's an adult stipend cost through Explorica. So the students are at a lower rate versus the adult stipend. So there's different costs there. They do, they have an adult stipend.
Is that for the chaperone, then?
The chaperone depends upon how he sets it up. If he hasn't set up a, a free chaperone for every six, I don't know, you can also say, I want my chaperones to pay half of the cost, or I want a chaperone per eight. It all affects the cost of the trip or the student and the adult stipend. So those are different variables that come into play.
Yeah, I think if you got, did a little bit more research and got back to Mr. Denarski, we can figure something out, go from there.
As for the Minneapolis trip.
That needs to run through Mr. Denarski. Yeah, we'll need, yeah, we don't, we don't need board approval for that.
Say, Dean, Mike.
Tell Mike.
Say, uh, I'm just thinking back when we did the Italy trip, and I think we had the discussion about family. And if I remember right, the decision kind of came through that, you know, this is a student trip with chaperones and family would be, um, probably not invited on it.
Yeah, I don't recall that, but yeah, that's, we could look back through minutes, I guess, if we need to and see what was discussed.
Well, if you have a precedent, then that's.
I guess, yeah, that's. We don't know that for sure, so we'd want to check that, but. But, um.
A parent or somebody could be a chaperone.
Correct, yeah, yeah, by all means.
Was this other question discussion or was this?
Yeah, I don't know. It's not listed on my agenda as, as an approval, is it? Well, yeah. I guess. Informative? No, it wouldn't have been, but we're not taking action on this. Yep.
Any more questions for me?
Good, thank you. Move on to nine point two, the world language trip, November of twenty twenty four.
So, hello everyone. Thank you for, um, being with us today. Uh, I'm asking permission from you all to send information home regarding a Spanish immersion trip to either Costa Rica or Puerto Rico. Um, the proposed trip would happen over Thanksgiving break in twenty twenty four. Uh, as you, some of you are aware, I have taken five very successful trips with students during my teaching career. Three at Bagley High School and two here at Boston. Each trip requires hundreds of hours of self-planning and preparation to make sure all aspects of the trip are covered. While teaching in Boston, I went with three other chaperones and twenty-four students to Spain in twenty nineteen. In the fall of twenty twenty-two, twenty-two students, three chaperones, and myself traveled to Puerto Rico to immerse ourselves in the Spanish language and culture without having to travel abroad due to the COVID restrictions prior to that. I believe each trip gives students possible life-changing awareness of the world around them, and the educational value is priceless. As you may remember reading through the thank you cards that were distributed to you at a previous meeting?
Yes.
Okay, now you've gotten them, okay.
Yeah.
They were supposed to be all in English. Okay, okay, good, excellent. All right, uh, the educational tour companies I'm working with are either Explorica or EY. These companies are fitting to provide the best possible rates financially, as well as providing safety measures and itinerary that require for a successful trip. At this current time, I'm simply asking for, um, permission to send home, um, to continue the Boston tradition of a Spanish trip being offered. Rita had started one when she was a Spanish teacher here, and she would take her students to, um, Mexico. So in keeping with the FHS custom, students and the families of District six oh one have come to expect or, um, a trip that would be offered every year and a half. That's how the precedent has been set. So students who enroll in Spanish, um, in ninth grade already talk about, um, when, when, uh, when can we go on our, our Spain trip? I said each trip needs to be approved by the school board. Hopefully, we can go, so this year's ninth graders will be juniors if the trip is approved. And then our classroom class would be seniors for them. So I only take, uh, juniors and seniors and chaperones that I select, um, because it's a, it's a very much a team effort of dynamic in that aspect with the chaperone. Uh, the students are strict, are, um, bound by a pretty hefty contract that I have them sign, and it goes home. It's been distributed to, uh, former, um, the school board members. They review that as well. Um, they sign that, their parents have to sign that. Uh, it's all in a year prior. Um, I, the reason why, I'm just going to put it out there, the reason why my trip was successful is because I have clear regulations in place. Uh, they need to meet grade requirements, they need to not be prude, they can't be any kind of all, um, penalty issues, that type of thing. Uh, and in those cases, it, it covers all the aspects of having a responsible student on the trip, which leads to a safe environment for all. The pros to this, this full-time trip is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for many students who, without otherwise, have the ability or means to travel outside to Midwest. Traveling to a different cultural area has a positive impact on a student's life, regardless of their gender, ethnicity, socioeconomic class. Students who took educational trips between the ages of twelve and eighteen are more likely to be academically and financially successful. They enjoy school more and felt a greater connection to their world, and reported that traveling influenced their career choices. I, for instance, am not a Spanish teacher in part of you if I hadn't, um, my junior year. Um, the main purpose of travel for students, uh, immersion into the foreign-speaking country where they help to rapidly improve their conversational skills. Um, the non-language subjects of, as world history, government, economics, and math are also learned, as in, as is cultural sensitivity. Students are then also, um, forced to step out of their comfort zone, um, to learn to navigate the different cities and metro transit options, trying new foods, and participating in different activities. Even as students, safety should be a top priority of this trip. While nothing is a hundred percent guaranteed, we have knowledge and tools to travel as safely as possible. This isn't a managed-oriented trip, and the, and the participants would need to understand that they must follow every safety procedure and know that they were, um, if they were to break any rules prior to the trip, uh, and or on the trip, that they are sent home. Either they're denied going on the trip if they can't meet the contract. Um, and then if they do something wrong on, while on the trip, they are sent home with their parents' exit. The Boston School District has done a great job in balancing student safety and personal choice, and I have full confidence that we can plan a safe and educational Spanish trip for our students, as we have done successfully in twenty nineteen and in twenty twenty-two. Thank you for your consideration and encouraging our students to trip span and horizons to be immersed in the Spanish language culture. Any questions?
Do you have a duration?
Yes.
Mine?
Mine is.
How many days are you thinking?
Five to seven days, max.
Okay, are you going to have? I don't know if I'm remembering right. Last time you guys went, did you have two different options for different durations, or was that just the difference we can stand for?
The two, yes, yeah. And the five days was great, and, and usually if you have a shorter trip, the cost is less as well.
When do you think you're going to get your bids back, Mike?
Um, I have them actually now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I, I could have sent anything else.
All right. Got a question just for Marguerite? Mike?
No, I'm good.
It's yarn, yeah, yeah, and, and the smallest trip that I've ever taken was, yeah, um, in twenty fourteen with Bagley, and there were ten students. Um, and then I was the sole chaperone along with the, um, Explorica chaperone that we met at, so that was two of the twenty-four hour. For that, the largest trip I've taken was thirty, and I had six chaperones, including myself, uh, also in Bagley. And then twenty-four and twenty-two. So I do, um, from past practice, I don't think there's going to be any less than, say, twelve, I see enough, probably thirty. Just realistically based upon, um, the majority is their own fundraising. There might be some broader rates that we offer. Um, I did that and then a couple concessions we had done, and then also there was like split the pot that were done in the past with last Flora for twenty twenty-two.
Okay, so we need a, uh, we're looking for a motion to approve sending information home.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Director Manicky, seconded by Director Marcus to approve, um, sending home information and an interest survey.
Yeah.
Uh, regarding world language trip in November of twenty twenty-four. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. At that point of clarification for the board, would the board like to further approve this trip once the decisions are made more precisely about the trip? So we would bring it back at that point in time?
Yeah, it would involve out-of-state travel, we have to, get approved, right?
Yes, just as, as we have done before.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thanks, Marguerite. Sierra, you're up.
Sierra, you're up.
Yeah, I'm five point three, nine point two, the Washington DC trip.
So about a month ago, someone from World Partners came to talk to the high school staff about an opportunity to bring junior high kids to DC, and we were working with Bagley to bring this there this summer. Um, Eric and I would like to extend this opportunity for our current seventh and eighth grade students, potentially sixth grade students as well for July twenty twenty-four. It would be an opportunity to bring kids to places that we talked about in both of our classes, such as Gaddysburg, the Holocaust Museum, which is huge, um, the American Indian Museum, the Juggernaut, the monuments, the Capitol Building. And one thing that's nice about this company is it seems like they really understand those school kids. So it wouldn't be an issue of trying to navigate the kids through the airport by ourselves. They will actually meet us at the school and help us hold the kids on the bus, help us get them to the airport, they'll be with us at the hotel and all of that. One thing that I'm wondering about is whether or not parents can go, because this organization, they allow parents to go as well, so then maybe they feel more comfortable with their kids going on the trip, they're at that age group. Um, it is in the summer, and the school is not liable, and parents actually have to sign something saying that the schools are not liable. So I'm not sure if an exception would be made for this trip or other trips that we've had in the past. It'll be a four-day trip. Twenty-four hundred dollars, we're not planning on doing any fundraising, we might ask the Lions or different organizations if we might be willing to offer small scholarships for kids who are in households. I'm not sure how the board handles that. Do you guys have any questions?
I just commented, in my previous school, um, we did contract with this organization, took two groups to DC in my time there. I attended both those, um, great trips, uh, well-organized, um, company, uh, literally you you get on and, and they take care of the rest, they are exceptional in security and safety, um, and all those aspects of being in a big city. Um, they provide multiple chaperones, the adults that go with really are not, 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 uh, expected to chaperone, they are expected to be a tourist like the kids. Um, I went as one of our, depending on the number of kids that sign up, they gift the school district chaperone spots that are paid by the company, I'm sure they're probably pushed back to the cost of the kid, but nonetheless, it's not additional cost. Um, and, uh, very, um, just very well organized. Um, when you arrive there, they, they put on your, your, uh, bus, uh, what's called a local expert who knows everything about DC, I went to DC and New York City both, but, uh, it's just a well, well-greased trip and, uh, no concern about safety at all. Uh, which is really important, I think, when we're sending kids into those community, or those cities.
Have you been thoughtful about making sure that all meals are covered?
Yeah.
Some companies, it's just meal day, but for them, it's all meals, you don't have to worry about using the same money.
All transportation is taken care of, they pick you up at your school, transport you to the cities, get on an airplane. When you arrive, there's transportation waiting for you, and they bus you back to your door after them, four days, I guess.
Uh, I'm, I'm confused because this, this trip is not a school-sponsored activity, so I, I don't understand. Are we just being careful as far as?
We're really a conduit for, for them to get to middle school students. Yeah.
And because we're part of that conduit, we have to approve those state travel then?
I, I would be more comfortable with that, yeah, yeah. They don't, they don't have access to our students, but through us. So that gives us some level of responsibility. Yeah, yeah.
Were you planning on taking chaperones?
Just one staff member or fifteen kids, so Eric and I would be going.
Okay, along with, um, two or three?
Yeah, they have, they'll have two or three chaperones as well.
Okay.
Yeah, it's more than staffed. I mean, it's staffed really well.
What do you perceive, would you need, um, sending, sending information home and start planning for those remote people?
So I'd be sending stuff home probably within the next few weeks, and then there would be a virtual, it's been programmed that would be led by someone from this company.
Any notes?
Um, if we have fewer than thirty-five people sign up, then if they were to tear something up, it's a little correct.
Dean, yeah, just probably a question for you, Todd, where you've worked with this group before. Um, you know, the question of parents, we're looking at what Mr. McCall brought to us, but if we're just kind of a conduit for this, um, would we have a say if parents went along on that trip?
Yeah, yeah, we didn't entertain not bringing parents, what, in my previous school, certainly something that, that, uh, Sierra or myself, I can reach out to that company and say, we want to make it just a student trip, i- if that's the direction we choose. I, I don't know what their response would be. Obviously, with the parents, you know, you, you almost assure yourself getting to that thirty-five number, or you're more likely to get to that number. Um, but on the same token, um, I know they'll do everything, if we have fifteen or twenty, they'll figure out a way for us to get there with our kids. This one may be not quite as urgent as March thirtieth, though I know that we want to get something in place before the end of the school year so that the kids and, or the families, you literally can pay them, you know, for the next fourteen months or whatever it is, once we start the process, you make a monthly payment to this world classrooms, and so that when, when the day comes, um, you're not porking out the twenty-four hundred, or I don't know what the cost is, twenty-four hundred, yeah. Obviously, you have the option to pay upfront if you want, but, um, but, um, there's options to pay off through the number of months. So we could ask some questions, they will come onsite, as Sierra said, and present it to all of our, um, to those parents that have shown interest, or those families that have shown interest.
So are you actually looking first to approve the trip, or just approve for you to get started on it?
Approve to get started on it. And I guess it might be valuable, no, it makes sense, parents are not, because I don't want to start thinking that I can and then figure out that I can't.
To do some research.
Will this be for next year's sixth, seventh, I think, of students then? This is the current seventh, eighth, ninth, and possibly this year's sixth grade students.
Yeah, so they would be eighth and ninth graders, correct, yeah. Well, I think we're gonna have to make a decision on the, our trip as well, so we can bring this information at the same time. Yeah, yeah. I don't know that we need to be.
Get the ball rolling. Yeah, I think, I think a motion that you, um, be able to reach out to families, um, see what interest that there is, we, we as a board will clarify um, in regards to the parents pretending to get that, that information to you so you can live in your life. Um, gee, that's why I have a lot of motion. We have a, uh, a motion by Director Chris. To grant from permission to explore the Washington DC trip, uh, in twenty twenty-four. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That is approved. Thanks, Ms. Gilchon.
Both Mr. McGurton, Mr. McCall and Ms. Gilbertson, we will, um, Mr. Dennis, I will meet with you here in the next few days to clarify exactly what we're looking for, okay?
Move on to finance, uh, we'll move up, uh, very financial, yeah.
Alright, online, as you can see, we have, uh, Mike Ojaiho, who we all know. And I want to introduce to you, uh, another gentleman, um, Mr. Ryan Dlogger. Ryan is working on behalf of Bear, but he is a current superintendent in Belle Plaine, uh, Minnesota. He, uh, is kind of the, I want to give, I don't want to cheat you out, Mike, but I think Ryan is kind of the author of this. Tool, and has used it, uh, in a couple of different places, and has consulted with some other districts across the state on this process. So, uh, with that, I'll turn over to Ryan and Mike.
Uh, good evening, uh, I'm going to share my screen in a, in a second or two, uh, and you will have to give me some feedback how that works. So, uh, Ryan, uh, we apologize, Ryan got a brand-new computer, uh, he is running a Mac, and, uh, he has this fancy little band across the front of the Mac, and it runs, it's its own Windows. And, uh, he has dragged his hand across three times and activated volumes and different things we've. With that being said, uh, please stop us, uh, Todd, you may have to, uh, you may have to, uh, uh, repeat a question or two from the members, uh, but stop us at any point. Uh, just to say how Bear got involved in this is, uh, Ryan, uh, I happen I happened to work with my wife, uh, at Stillwater Area Schools, and had been a part of, uh, budget adjustments and reductions for many years, and, uh, actually, of course, he was teaching, um, uh, he had his students focus on what, 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 what are real cuts in the school district, or what are real adjustments? And how can we track, and what's the right way to go about it? So, uh, what, what Ryan and I did is we took his model and put it on steroids and said, hey, why can't we do this? Why can't we look at a comparison tool for all districts in the state, and how might that look? So, uh, Ryan said what he wanted to be put in here, and we've gathered the data. And, uh, the model that you're gonna get shared with today is, is the first step of what I'm gonna call a thirty thousand look, uh, and then we start diving down into particulars. So, we started to dive down on particulars for you, but we're gonna bring you back to square one first, and then we'll, uh, we'll, we'll do, we'll, we'll start, uh, we'll start skinny dipping, let's so to speak, uh, before we dive. So, uh, hopefully you enjoy this, and, uh, please let us know if we, if you can't hear one of us, or, uh, you can't see the screen, or however.
Alright, so, um, yeah, as, as Todd said and Mike said, um, you know, I'm actually a practicing superintendent right now, but as Mike and I were just talking, I think this is the twelfth or thirteenth district now, but, um.
Anything on a second, Ryan?
Hey, and we gotta get some volume for you.
For me?
Yeah, no, it's from our end, hang tight. Probably not have something plugged in there?
Okay, is that, hold on one second, guys, sorry. Okay, can everybody hear me?
Just a, on a TV volume versus my computer. You just bear with us.
Okay, is that coming, is it, Todd, is it coming any clearer on Ryan's microphone mode?
Yeah, it's fine there, as I said, it's only coming through my computer, no, that's.
Uh, it'll, it'll be in your settings.
I'm not a Mac guy.
If you go to your settings, uh, and audio, you'll be able to switch it.
Are you on a Mac?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're on a Mac.
Top right.
So you, so you see those three dots by the, by the end session button? Do you hit that and hit settings? Now, go to audio and hit your dropdown box, and it should show your TV as a secondary speakers.
Yeah, go back to where we were before.
Are you sharing, sharing your screen, you can show it.
No, Steve said up here at all.
There's only one set of speakers showing?
Are you, are you projecting through an Apple TV, or are you plugged in?
We have it through, plugged in, through our owl.
Okay, so let me see here. Let me see if I can help you. See, I can't, when presenting the screen, I can't run my.
So you had nothing here in this dropdown that you see on the screen? See, Mike?
Yeah, no.
How about video?
That won't do it, the other question I had, Todd, maybe if you go up to the apple in the upper left, you go to system settings?
Yep.
Or go to sound? And then go to output? Is your, is your volume up, and then also where it says MacBook Pro speakers? Is there a click, is there a dropdown there at all or not?
No, it says built-in.
Shoot.
Listen, I got my tech guy here, hang tight.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Up in the top right?
Of my what screen now?
Of the, your main screen on your computer. Can you see where your, uh, date is at?
Yep.
And then there's a, two little things stacked on top of each other? Click on that.
Yep.
Down where you see sound?
Yep.
And just click that arrow.
That arrow.
Right on sound, there should be a little arrow next to it.
Yep, I did that.
And it doesn't?
MacBook Air speakers, Samsung.
And it doesn't give you any output there, huh?
Yeah, but it doesn't, what's this TV called?
It's probably like, uh, Samsung or what, what's your options?
Samsung is an option.
That's when you want it.
What do I do, double-click on it?
Yeah, it just clicks, or it highlights it.
Okay, did that.
Now do you move, you, have somebody else talk?
You want us to talk now? Did it come through?
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Okay, are you there?
It's still only coming through the computer.
It's just coming through the computer?
But when I click on Samsung, it doesn't put that in the highlight bar.
And you, I don't think you have the owl plugged in? But?
Yeah, I do.
So, okay.
It must, I mean, it's, it's on TV.
Yeah, that's, just, okay, so then on your. We should, let's go back to your Google Meets once.
Back to where?
Google Meets.
My calendar?
Nope, nope, it's where all the videos at.
Okay.
Okay, go to settings.
Was it mine? How does it pick up the, give, Ryan, give us a shout.
Hey, you there? Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, just hang tight.
Okay. I could probably get some people that would pay to figure out how to keep my volume down like this.
Superintendent C one oh one, have your tech guy with you at all meetings. Apologize to everyone.
We're good to go? Okay. Um, all right, um, uh, as Mike said, um, I am currently a practicing, uh, superintendent in the state. But, uh, I do a lot of work in this area, I think it's, you're the twelfth or thirteenth district that I have worked with. And, um, during that time, uh, all of, over the last probably three to four years, all of them have continued. We've had an ongoing relationship over that time, except for one. And that's because the superintendent's retiring right now and he wants to, he'll leave the opportunity up for the new person to see if, um, they want to continue working through the model that we're going to present. And just a quick, as Mike talked about in the background, I used to teach a graduate course in school finance and HR. And, um, one of the things we did was, um, as a culminating project, the students had to review different expenditure areas and look at some key areas in terms of expenditures and revenues and fund balances. And out of that, uh, I developed a model. Um, as a superintendent, uh, I've been in the role for eight years in the same district. My first year I came in, I had to cut a million dollars. And, uh, I applied this model and I went around and I told staff, I said, I know this is going to be difficult, it's not a great way to start the job. But I will, I showed them the model, I said, we will follow this for the next eight years. And we haven't had to make a budget reduction or cut that we haven't wanted to make in that eight years. Because we are what I call financially balanced, um, because we live the model that I'm going to show you today. Um, every year we review it, we look at it, we make sure our spending is in order. We also do not have an operating referendum in place. We take the seven twenty-four from the state, but we don't have any additional funds per pupil. Um, so, and you can ask me some questions about that if you want to see how it looks in the, the district that I'm in now. Um, but what we're going to talk about today really is, um, looking at Foston, um, and kind of how the model works, so. Yeah, and as it says on the screen here, you know, the operational budget assistance model, it provides districts clarity around how they're spending their money. Um, when I was in Stillwater, as Mike talked about, we made budget cuts seven out of eight years, including one year we had to cut as much as ten million dollars. And, you know, I always learned you can be frustrated with the people who are angry when you're always making cuts or you can sit down and try to understand where they're coming from. And in a lot of those conversations, I understood where they were coming from and it really caused me to dig deeper into why are we in this situation that every year we're having to make cuts? And it's because we were spending money in areas that were a huge problem and not making adjustments there. And yet we were making cuts in areas that we weren't overspending in. And you're going to see that a little bit more when we get into the model. Um, but so OBA, it really allows us the ability to look at overall expenditures. Um, financial decisions are never made in isolation in schools. Uh, what this really is, is it's a conversation starter for us to have a general idea of how we're spending our money and to dig a little bit deeper into areas that will cause us to ask questions. And in some cases, we may be spending more money in certain areas than comparable districts. And we might be okay with that and that's okay, but at least we understand why we're spending that money. So, what does the tool provide? Uh, clarity for all stakeholders in the district. Um, we used to have people who would come in and want to go line item by line item through the budget and tell us to cut this and cut that. And yet they didn't understand that you could cut this, but it came out of a pot of money that wasn't related to the general fund. So that cut wouldn't actually save you any money. So, what this really does is help people understand at, at thirty, forty thousand foot level, um, how the budget works and how we're spending money in relation to how other districts of similar size and resources are spending money. Helps us in negotiations, um, I came into the district I was in, they had never settled a contract before January. They almost always, in fact, for the previous six contracts, twelve years, they had gotten to mediation every single time. We've settled our last two contracts in one meeting, um, including our last one was three and a half hours and it probably could have been done in two and a half. Uh, but somebody brought a cake and wanted to have cake in the middle because it was somebody's birthday party. But it really has helped our teachers and our non-certified staff understand where our money is. You know, and at the end of the day, what I've learned is people want a fair settlement, um, but they also don't want to be in a situation where I've got forty kids in a class or I see eight of my colleagues get cut. And it's really built a lot of trust between our unions and our, our leadership, our board, um, in terms of, uh, how we spend our money. And when we're making an offer and they're making a counter offer, that they can see how it's going to affect the overall budget picture. Uh, it's, it assists in the development, implementation, evaluation every year in our budget. Um, my business manager and I go through, we've gone through this three times already in the last month, just to get a handle on some of our expenditure areas as we look at Esser winding down, but also the potential of what's going to be coming from the state. But as I've told every district that I'm working with right now and my business manager and our union leadership a few weeks ago, my biggest fear and what's happening at the state right now is we're going to get a windfall of money. And in two years, we're all going to be in a lot of trouble because I think they're going to spend a lot of money that might not be here in two years. And I want to make sure that as we go forward, we're prepared to weather that storm. Um, and then what it does is it allows the districts to quantify their academic return on investment. In the model, you know, at this point, we only have the MCA scores not loaded through two thousand nineteen because to me, all of the scores during COVID have been a mess because kids opted in and opted out and there, there's just not a lot of validity to them. But we actually use this to look at our comparable districts that we use financially, also how we do in terms of our MCA and our academic performance. Um, so what it, what this does, you know, a lot of people will say it to me like this, it's really a business model approach in this, in the sense that it looks at what is your market share and what is fair market value for positions? Just like businesses and organizations have to do. We often talk about, you know, why do we have four social studies teachers at the secondary? Because we've always had four. Um, I was working with a district in northern Minnesota that had districts of about nineteen hundred students. So we were looking at seven districts, they had twenty-four custodians in one of those districts. If they cut nine of those custodians, they still would have had the most custodians of every other district. So they, they were able to see through this process, they were spending over, almost thirteen hundred dollars on operational maintenance of the eight thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars per pupil they got was going towards operational maintenance. And nobody else was even close to that. So, but they often looked at it just in isolation, as we'd have, we'd have twenty-seven custodians because we've always had twenty seven, uh, twenty, sorry, twenty-four. We had twenty-four custodians because we've always had twenty-four custodians. So what it allows you to do is really look not only at yourself, but how does your spending relate to six other districts that basically have the same size as you, which equates to the same resources, um, that you would have. And then we'll also do a fund balance comparison, just to review and look at where you are fund balance wise, um, and help really prepare for the next steps as you go into the future. So, this is a part of the model and you'll see, we can click on this when we get in here, but this is all of the things that you can look at, um. You'll be able to look at, and in the model, you'll be able to see data for, this is twenty twenty-one's data you can see, but you'll be able to see twenty nineteen, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. So you actually can look year over year, how your percentages have changed, how your enrollments changed. But it looks at free and reduced lunch, it looks at ELL population, it looks at special ed, looks at your homeless population, your non-white. And it also looks at your students, um, who are enrolled in the district, your students who, so your residential pupils who attend. It'll look at your residential pupils who attend elsewhere. And then it will look at your net gain or net loss through open enrollment, which in a lot of districts, especially as you get towards the metro, because there's a lot of movement. Um, you, uh, it's, that's something that a lot of people around that area want to talk about because they want to know how do we keep our kids in our district?
One caveat is that public school enrollment, those three lines, that's who you trade with other public schools. That's not going to include your charter or your homeschool folks. So just keep that in mind that we have a capture rate that's in this model that we're not showing because we haven't got updated numbers from the state. But that capture rate would say, okay, how, what percentage of our resident population, uh, what, how much percentage do they make up out of butts and seats, uh, for us? So, just keep that in mind that this is public in and out, but you'll notice that, that although the numbers are small, every one of those districts that we have in the, in the comp is positive open enrollment. The extent that that open enrollment is different between the seven comps, but they're all positive.
Mike or Ryan, can, can you enlarge that graphic by any chance?
Not, uh, we'll enlarge it in, I'll enlarge it on the Excel model.
We'll click it when we go to the Excel model, you'll be able to see how you can click and play with it there, so. Actually, you can go ahead if you want. So we're going to, we'll take a look at the model here and this is what I've worked with Todd and, uh, your business manager on before. And what this is, is so this is the same sheet you were looking for on the PowerPoint, as you can see, that's, the first year is two thousand nineteen. So it has all enrollments for your district and six districts of similar size. Now, one of the things that we talked a lot about was we're paid on ADM, average daily membership, and that's dependent on pupils. It's like we had talked initially about, and, and know this, the nice thing about this model is we can just enter a district number in the yellow. Like, why don't we put Bagley in for Nevis quick? Just, but we had talked about Bagley, but Bagley is a lot larger district. So if you go to where Nevis is, uh, Bagley's one sixty-two. So all you have to do here to look at other districts is click and now you loaded all of that district's information in that cate, in that category. So as Todd can, or as board members, as you're working through this, you can look at different districts, you can look at every district in the state. All of their data is loaded into here and it will change that information for you. And if you just scroll, you've got, see, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. So you can look at historical data in free and reduced lunch, English language learner, how much has your special ed count gone up? That's one conversation we have, a lot of, um, open enrollment, all of that on this tab. Let's go back and put Nevis back in. Whoa, shoot, the district number. Yeah, good, okay, then let's click on OBA seven. Rank seven, yeah. So this is the tab that I, I use the most, that I think is what I described as the thirty to forty thousand foot level. And how this tab works is, is it takes and it looks at it per pupil.
I'm going to enlarge it so you could see three districts, folks.
Yeah, it's really, it's really important to know that the per pupil category is what's important. You know, I was down in Jackson County Central working with them and one of their board members wanted to see how they compared to Edina. So we put Edina in and they were actually able to look at Edina, how much Edina spends per pupil on, on what I call are these seven key expenditure areas. Spending in district administration, spending in school administration, regular instruction, instructional support, pupil support, operational maintenance and transportation. These are the seven areas that I've found over the last fifteen years, that if you can be balanced in, you'll never have to make a budget cut as long as you stay balanced in those areas. So what we do over, where you see rank, is we rank districts based on their per pupil spending. If you're a one, you spend the least, if you're a seven, you spend the most. And it, it's not a, the competitive side of me always wants to be low, it's not a competition. It's really just about understanding where we are spending versus our comparables and that we know how we're spending money there. And for, for you or for some districts, the, the thing to look at is if you have high revenue, you can have high expenditure. When I talked about having to cut in Stillwater for seven out of eight years, we didn't have an operating levy, so we were low revenue, but we spent the third most of all, of the comparable districts. So that's why we were always cutting because we were, we were spending more than we were bringing in every year and we could never figure out why. So what you have here is two thousand eighteen data, Mike scrolling to two thousand nineteen data, two thousand twenty data and two thousand twenty-one data, which is last year's audits that are done. So, actually, if you scroll back up, you see, what, what you want to look at is the rank score. So in two thousand eighteen, uh, your rank score at the bottom was a thirty-two and you can see you're a seven, six, whatever, let's go down, you get six hundred and forty-four kids. In two thousand and twenty-one, you had five hundred and ninety-one kids. And your rank score is a thirty-five, where you see Nevis is a twenty, Cambie's a twenty-four. So the next area then, oh yeah, and they go, you can go over, there's twenty-four, twenty-seven. Parker's Prairie's a thirty-two.
And Black Duck's a thirty-four.
Thirty-four. So then let's go back over. Now what you want to do is we go down to the, to the red line here where it looks at expenditures, so Cambie's a high revenue district, you can see they have a seven in the purple, they're a low expenditure district too. Which, I'm going to show you, that's a good thing, except I'm going to show you something on Cambie that, to me, would be somewhat troublesome in the sense of, um, they have a high levy in place, but they have a huge fund balances result of it, we're going to look at that. For you, you guys are high in revenue, but you're also high in expenditure, you can afford to do that, but it's something that I'd want to have a strong understanding where my money is because it's a very easy place to slip into where all of a sudden you start overspending and now you're in a situation where you have to cut. One of the first districts I worked with had a four million dollar fund balance. And three years later, they were down to just under two million, but they were deficit spending at almost a million, about nine hundred and some thousand a year. And so they had gone from being very healthy to all of a sudden through some enrollment and, and staffing, their enrollment had dropped, they hadn't cut or adjusted staffing. And now all of a sudden they sat in a situation where they were getting close to statutory operating debt. Question, Todd?
Yeah, let me just, if you would comment on this statement I'm going to make, um, so on any given category, being a seven or a one, it might be due to how we code some things.
Some of it would be that, what, what this is going to lead us to is looking at how we code things and why we, why we code them.
Let me finish, let me finish that thought.
Yep.
But then, let's just say that we code more to district level admin versus, um, pupil support services or whatever. There, the bottom number, the thirty-five, twenty, twenty-four, the cumulative, that's going to take out the coding issues. And that pretty much, that's the good comparable number to other districts, true or untrue?
Um, yes and no, so let, let me give you a little bit of example. What, what this is, is it's not, I don't want to use, what's really hard is you don't want to use it as we're good or we're bad. What we want to use it as, this is where we are, now let's go find out what we're doing. So I was working with Sibley East, which is a district down just to the west of the metro, and they were a seven in district administration. And so we wanted to know why that was, because we know there, it's not just the superintendent's salary, it's not the business manager's salary, neither of them are overpaid, they're probably both underpaid actually for the size district. What happened in Sibley East in that first year I worked with them, when we looked at theirs, they had a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in legal fees because they had built a new school and the foundation had sunk. And so it was a one-time payment, but now they understood why they were a seven because they wouldn't have, they're not going to have that payment the next year. But it helped them dig a little bit deeper to say, whoa, why are, why are we a seven here? And now coming back this year, that number has gone down because that payment is out. Um, but they were having a conversation about adding a curriculum director. So they actually, and we're going to get to it in a second here, I'll show you, where they plug in a dollar amount, if we add this curriculum director, what is that going to do to district administration? So some of it is coding, um, but it, really what it should do is, what I do is I take all the sixes and sevens every year and I look at it and say, why would we, why are we a six or seven there? And we're going to go to the next tool that allows you to look object code by object code in that area. A second example of that would be like in pupil support services. Um, the district admin, we were a one in that area or a two every year amongst our comparables. We had a lot of problems with mental health, our students being able to access mental health therapists. So our board said, let's add a full-time mental health therapist in the district, costs us a hundred thousand dollars. So we go through this every February with our board and our one or two went to a five. And one of the board members looked and goes, why did we go to a five in pupil support services? We went to the tool we're going to look at next and I said, we added a mental health therapist, we spent a hundred thousand dollars, everybody was fine with it. But we understood why we were a five in that area to our comparables, we were the only district that had a full-time mental health therapist on staff. So, the five wasn't a bad thing, it just helps us dig deeper and understand why we're spending money in that area. Go to that. So where we, we do the referendum and then where we add and change the numbers?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, one second. So we're going to scroll down here, now this is another important part and I want to make sure, so these are the operating referendums. So you can see you're six oh one, you have four hundred and thirty-six per pupil, Nevis does not have an operating referendum, Cambie has six hundred and seventy-six dollars per pupil. Nevis does not have an operating referendum. Cambie has six hundred and seventy-six dollars per pupil. Underwood does not have one. Uh, Parker's Prairie. Moose Lake does not have one. Parker's Prairie is three sixty-one, and Black Duck doesn't have any. I want Mike, go back and click to comparable seven, uh, comparable seven. I wanna look at Cambie's fund balance. This is something if I was in Cambie that I would be somewhat concerned about though. You notice they get six hundred and seventy-six dollars per pupil? Look at their fund balance. They have an eighty-one percent fund balance. They have five point one four two million dollars in the bank that they're not spending. So they might be a twenty, this is a perfect example. They're a twenty-four on expenditures if you go back to the seven rank. But if I was, if, if that was my board, they would be looking at me saying, spend the money. You know, we're not a bank. So at some level, yeah, they're, they're twenty-four, looks really good, but I would actually be saying, you know, in regular instruction, they spend the least amount of money. Like, I would be, they have a ton of money they could be putting into regular instruction, whether that's in adding teachers, teacher contract, whatever that is. Because right now, they basically have as much money in their fund balance as they get every year in revenue. So that's again how this tool helps you just look and say, well, here's where our money is. It's, you know, like Cambie's a twenty-four, and twenty-four in my mind, looking at this, isn't good. They should be higher because they have way more money, or they shouldn't be collecting a seven sixty-seven in addition to the seven twenty-four a year, because they don't need it. So that's looking at operating. Now is where we go over to where we actually make some changes. Um, let's, let's, let's go, uh, let's just go back and look, sorry, at here, at Foston in two thousand twenty-one. So what we're gonna do is, is we're gonna look at district admin, school admin, regular instruction, and operational maintenance. Those are the areas that your sixes and sevens in, okay?
I'm gonna bring you back here, folks.
Okay.
Bear with me. So those are the, those four highlighted areas are in blue that Ryan just said. Those four out of the seven categories are summarized on this, on this sheet. And what I like about this is we're taking a look at two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty, and twenty-two. So you can see the trend in district administration went from five thirty-six to five forty-five to four ninety-three. So there's been some changes. Now, school administration uh, went down for two, went down for a year and then popped, popped up off. So there could be some change, I mean, whatever. Regular instruction, uh, we went down, and then we went back up to almost the two thousand eighteen level. And then operational maintenance, uh, that grew each year. And we all know, other than Ryan, we all probably know that there's, um, good reason on your facilities where, why operational maintenance is there, uh, but it, but it's also something that we think we need to delve into further.
And, and if you go over to district administration, if you notice, in eighteen, you were spending eight thirty-three a pupil, five thirty-six, six thirty-six overall. But in two thousand twenty-two, you have made, you've cut about forty thousand dollars out of district admin, but you're still spending per pupil two dollars more because you have fifty less pupils. And as, and this is the biggest challenge districts have, when enrollment decreases, we might cut our social studies teacher, our first grade teacher, our second grade teacher, but we often don't look at our FIED, our art, our music, or our clerical staff, or our transportation. You know, one of the things in the first year when I came in, you know, we were a district of sixteen hundred and fifty kids, running twelve bus routes. And then we had become a district of four hundred and ninety-two kids, and we're still running twelve bus routes. We now run seven bus routes. Like, we were able to cut five bus routes, and we spend less on transportation today than we did five years ago. But it just had never been adjusted or changed in this model. This is what it helps you do in each of these areas to look at what changes do we need to make. So let's go to the second OBA spreadsheet where we dig in and we can show, okay, um, okay.
We want, we wanna use this as, so, oh, so this is an object code, folks. Uh, you see, in district administration, um, just at Foston spends forty-two thousand under this object code for communication services.
Yep. And Nevis spent zero, Cambie spent sixteen hundred, Underwood eight thousand. You can see what everybody spent. And then, and this gets into, don't, don't make a judgment about whether forty-two thousand is right. That might be what you want to spend. Um, but just know what, what is that forty-two thousand? So Todd, it gets back to coding. Could be coding, that you're coding something there. Like, I have a full-time communications person too. I actually charge the majority of her to community ed, because she does the community ed guide, she does a bunch of stuff on the community ed, but I also use her for district communications as well. Um, can you pull up the object code?
Yep, I wanted to, so if you're a visual person, this is twenty-two, and the heat map says that green is the lowest in the category. Red is the highest spending. The categories are just left to right, and the districts are scrolling down. And then this is the rank, uh, and when I go one size smaller, you can see that the rank for twenty-two has a high of, has a low of twenty and a high of thirty-five for, uh, rank. But what Ryan wants me to do now is to come over here.
Go to district admin.
And we're gonna go to district admin, and we're gonna hit this, we're gonna hit this positive bar, and you should see this screen blow up.
This, but so this is something else. My business manager and I, this was the sheet we've gone through at least three times in the last month, like just looking line item by line item. And, but what we do here is just look at, these are all the object codes that things get coded to, and all we look for are anomalies. So Todd, getting back to, there may be coding where we code, uh, technology in one code, somebody else is coding it somewhere else. But we can look through these and we can see that, because it has to be coded somewhere in one of these. We can just tell where it is. Like, this year we went up, and like, we were a three in regular and, uh, in instructional support, and this year we were a seven. And I was like, whoa, what happened? And we were going through it. Well, we did a one-to-one purchase of iPads and spent six hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. So we went from a, a low, like a three to a seven because of that money. Now next year, that payment won't be there, because we paid it all in full one year. But it's not that the seven is bad, it's that we understand why it's a seven now. We know because we did the iPad purchase. Next year it'll go out. We expect that number most likely will go back down. So this is the one where if you go to communication, uh, services, so it just shows under three twenty what everyone's spending in that area, and that's what we pulled out and put on the spreadsheet. Um, if you close this one, Mike, uh, let's go back to the PowerPoint maybe. It's close to that. So that was that one. If you also look at non-instructional, this is the one thing that I noticed, Todd, in looking at this. So non-instructional was one thirty-eight, Nevis was one thirty-nine, Cambie one twenty-six, Parker's Prairie. You know, everybody there in the one thirties. Click to the next one. Again, non-instructional and school administration, hundred and thirty-six thousand. Go to the next one. Again, in non-instructional, a hundred and three thousand, the next closest is eighty. So if I were to give you a recommendation, one of the thing I would look at, if you're in a situation where you might need to make some reductions, or you're looking at, we need to free up some money, because we wanna do something else with it, um, non-instruction would be the area I would look at. What are, what are we coding to non-instruction in district administration? What are we coding to non-instruction in school administration? Uh, and that could be lunch supervision with paras, it can be a variety of things. What are we coding to non-instruction in, in regular instruction? That could be general ed para support. It could be, could be a variety of things. And then one more, actually, I think even your non-instruction in operational maintenance is two hundred and eighty-six. So it's the second highest. So there's a lot of money that's coded to non-instructional support personnel. That would be one area that I would go and look and just say, what's coded in each of these areas? Not that it's bad, not that you have to make cuts. Just that, that's an area that jumps out. If you go back to the other spreadsheet, the, uh, the one where we go through the object codes. That's where if you're going through the object and just close this one up, maybe and go to like school. So you can look at all seven of those categories. This is where you can delve in, and this is where you go line item by line item. And it just creates these areas where, okay, let's look at this, because it seems like we have a lot, we're spending a lot on non-instructional compared to our comparable districts. Um, you can open any of them. You could go to operational maintenance. You can scroll like non-instructional here. Like, Black Duck spends three hundred and thirty thousand. But if you were talking about coding, um, then I would go back and see, what is Black Duck spending in non-instructional and district admin? Regular instruction, they may be putting a lot of it here for whatever reason. They might be putting a lot of it up in district admin. You know, some people will code, um, you could have a op, a director of operations, so a head custodian in some districts. They might code that to non-instructional in district administration, because he might be seen as a district administrator, where Black Duck might be coding all of those positions to operational maintenance. So that's where you get into some of the coding questions, Todd. But the reality is, as you go through each of these areas, you're still gonna find where people code them. Because I, I can buy iPads and I can put those in a district level expense. I can put them in regular instruction expense. I can put them in instructional support. I have a technology code in each of those areas. It's gonna show up somewhere. So it's, and you'll be able to see where people, where people do that at as a result.
I like the fuels. Fuels, you and, you and, uh, oh, it was, uh, Black Duck and Nevis are the two that are spending most of the fuels, where you don't have any.
Hundred and three thousand Cambie in fuel.
I'm looking, Mike, I'm looking at Nevis there. They also have two hundred and some to the plus in open enrollment. They might be going to get their kids.
Oh, that's what I, yeah, I mean, that's, that's what's interesting about, okay, this gives us another hint as to the thirty thousand look. Now we're, now we go and we start, for lack of a better term, we, if you want us to proceed, if the board likes what's going on, we start peeling the onion now, and we, uh, we send an information request to each one of these other districts.
Yeah.
And say, okay, um, help us understand how you're spending this by filling out this form.
Yeah, I have a form for each of them. Like, how many non-instructional paras you have, how many special ed paras you have, how many custodians you have? Like, so when I was in Sibley East, the night I was there working with their board, they had, um, they had fifty-four general ed paras, a district of about a thousand seventy-five students. Uh, Jordan, who has about nineteen hundred kids, has like forty paras. They had fourteen less paras and nine hundred more kids. You know, so it got into, it made it easier to understand why they had to make some reductions. I was working with Fairmont, had almost seventy-some paras in two separate groups. And they're actually in a good position financially, but Andrew is trying to prepare them as ESSR winds down. They're actually deficit spending about a million a year. So he knows he needs to go from like in the seventies some paras down to probably in the forties or fifties. So he hasn't been hiring positions as they've been leaving. He hasn't had to make cuts, but he hasn't been replacing open positions, because he knows he has too much there. And that's how he uses this mo, that's how we use the model to at least develop a plan going forward. And their district has a fifty-one percent fund balance, you know, but one of their board members said, you know, they, they have two flight simulators, and they have thirteen high-end drones. They actually teach kids, they give them that drone certification, and they actually give them the initial stages if they wanna go to flight school to be a pilot. They have some really cool programs there. But their conversation was, what's the next thing that we can do? And so they wanna free up some of their money to make sure they can continue to have unique programming in that. And they really use this model to help them understand, okay, how are we spending our money compared to other districts? And then when we look object code by object code through these seven areas, are there some areas that maybe we have too much, or we wanna clean that up, because we wanna spend some of our money over here?
So with that, with that, what we did is, we're not picking on your communications, because we don't understand it. It's just a nice forty-two thousand number. If we were to change that and say, okay, we wanna spend that forty-two thousand differently.
Yep.
And that old rank, the new, old rank was a six. By moving that forty-two thousand elsewhere, new rank, five. All right, so we went six to five, and if we said, oh, let's put that in pupil support services if that's, was important to us. Okay, now we haven't, we moved from a one rank, where we're the lowest spender, to now you just moved in the middle of the pack. So you could see that pupil support services is, 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 is got a tight band on it with other districts.
And if you go back, go to the comparable data one, let's just go, and actually scroll down and show them what it does. So the other thing this tool does, and then scroll over, is it'll redo your number. You see where it's white, it changes. You were a six, you went to a five, you were a one, you went to a four. And you said, um, so it reranks you, so you can see how you're coming as you adjust and change those numbers. And you can use that where Mike showed either if you're making reductions. And like in the case where I just referenced Fairmont, we made reductions in a couple of areas, but we plugged that money back into some other areas where they wanted to spend. Um, you know what, and looking at your fund balance, so just let's go to comparable data seven table and go down. Like, you're doing very well financially. Uh, scroll down. Oh, oh boy, I lost it. There it is. Yeah, so you have two, you have two point one nine eight million. You were at one point eight last year, so you've had a trend of up. Now, and, and being smaller, you wanna have a little bit larger fund balance, um, where I always make, I don't make my business manager nervous really, but I always say I do. But you know, like I, we got up to around seventeen or eighteen percent, and the reality, we had to spend our money. You know, we have rough, we're getting close to, we have about fifteen hundred, a little over fifteen hundred kids now. You know, and our board policy's ten percent. Um, but seventeen was too high, you know, and so we've done some things to, the goal is to get it back to, I think after our last settlement, we did a one-time stipend with teachers. It wasn't related to COVID. But the message in negotiations was when the district does well, staff will do well. But we can't make it an ongoing cost, because fund balance money's one-time money. So we gave all of our groups, um, a one-time. Our teachers got two thousand, our paras, our non-certifieds got fifteen hundred. And that spent our fund balance down to about thirteen percent, which we're comfortable at thirteen percent. And they know that's not gonna be an every-time thing. They know because of this, looking at how our expenditures are, where our money is, that that's why we were able to do that in the last round of negotiations. Um, but you can see you're doing healthy, but I think as I saw Todd shake his head, and where I would caution everybody right now is, I don't know how you're using your ESSR money. Some people spent it all on HVAC and infrastructure. Some people have it all tied up in staffing. And if you have it tied up in staffing, this is what you wanna really understand, because that money's going away in two thousand twenty-four. And if right now you're putting some general ed money into fund balance, if, if your fund balance has to pick that up as an ESSR cost, that becomes an ongoing, um, cost. And when it's ongoing, you'll drain that fund balance really quick, because fund balance is one-time money. And I always say, you can always spend a dollar one way. And if you keep it in the budget, and you come up short, you have to cut it twice, because you paid it, and it's in the budget for the next year. So a four hundred thousand dollar problem becomes an eight hundred thousand dollar problem in reductions. So again, and, and Todd, you know, one of the things like I, I talk to Barry all the time down in Jackson County Central, probably every week or every couple of weeks through this model. I just, I wanna offer that support. If you ever have any questions, if your business manager has questions, um, you know, and we can look at different districts. Anybody that wants to look at a different district, it's easy to plug those into either of the two models we looked at. Um, I'm more than willing to help and be a resource and give my thoughts or perspective on it. Um, the one thing that I think has really helped me, uh, my board is actually, gives me ten additional days a year where I could actually go out to districts, take work off and go work with districts, because the one thing I think it's helped me do too is I've gained a perspective from across the state. From Fairmont to Jackson County Central, Blue Earth, Foley, Little Falls, Thief River Falls, um, we're also, went out to Wilmer, um, a variety, but I've been able to see, and a variety of different sized districts. So I have a really, I've started to gain a really good understanding of how people are spending their money. And each of those districts have six comparables. So I look at all of those compared to each other as well. So I can give you thoughts and insights, even what I see from those other districts in terms of what they have staffing-wise and that, so.
Okay. We probably should look at Rappin', Mike, and then Ryan.
Um.
Yep, so, this is another way, this is just exactly what we were talking about with Cambie, is in the highlighted yellow that, hey, their unreserved fund balance is sitting at eighty-one percent. You're right in the middle of the pack in the lower left-hand corner, twenty-nine, and we are.
Done.
We're done.
Sorry.
But that is, you, you see there's a lot of data collected, and it's just, just, thank you for your time spent on it, because what we wanna be able to do is say, through this data collection, now we need to do the deep dive. Now we need to do some things, but we will need your direction or your interest, and you just know that all this is here. Uh, but we'd love to now take those next steps and say, okay, uh, we think it's a valuable tool. Um, can we send this information out, go collect it, and, uh, so that we can work with your administration next to write a report, uh, back to you that's a little more static, so we're not jumping around various spots. It'll be a report that says, for instance, uh, when we went down to Blue Earth area schools, um, I have known the director of, uh, their custo, the, the head custodian, um, had a phenomenal reputation and has thirty-five years of experience in the school and knows every nook and cranny. And we told him that you're probably needing to look at a hundred thousand dollars of doing something different on the operational side. His head just hung, because I know he's pinched every- of doing something different on the operational side. His head just hung because I know he's pinched every dime that he could. And Ryan came up and said, hey, here's three different ways we think we can help you, uh, achieve that hundred ten thousand of position difference here, uh, part-time summer workers here, and I forget the third one. And he, he just said, I can make that work. And that just flowed to the rest of when we were cutting one point one million. Uh, they were at four, uh, period day, four-period day, and we talked about moving to a six or seven over the course of a two-year, uh, migration to it, uh, through attrition of some retiree retirements and stuff like that. So they, we walked out of there and I thought it was gonna be Pitchfork Nation with fifty-six angry teachers. And they came up and started hugging Ryan and, and my wife, and I don't think Ryan's all that huggable people. Uh, but they were, they, they, they were a disgruntled group that through this process, uh, it made a huge difference in their ability to work with their board and administration and, uh, it turned out pretty neat. And, and that's the power of, that's the power of data and numbers and being able, being able to continually use it. So thank you for your time.
Okay, any, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Anybody have any questions for Mike or Ryan?
It'll take us a little time to digest that. Um, I'll be in touch with you guys, uh, probably shoot an email tomorrow and we'll reconnect, had the next steps and some of those things.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
And you, Todd, you have a copy of this PowerPoint to share out. Uh, we can also PDF it if you want it for the group if they want to see it, uh, in a little more depth.
Sounds good. I'll talk to you tomorrow or Wednesday.
All right, sounds good.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Moving on, finance, fund balance report.
Yeah, as presented, um, talked to Joan, uh, we look at fund balance report, and we look at the expense revenue summary. Uh, you know, the, um, fund balance report is pretty straightforward. Again, it's not changing much. Um, it's, you know, inching up just a little bit, but some of that is when we pay our bills. And Joan wanted me to make that point to you is the, um, particularly expense revenue summary there, um, uh, depending, sometimes we, we have, uh, paid bills towards the end of the month. Sometimes there's invoices outstanding or whatever. So this is, this is not a, this is just a snapshot of today or with the day that she ran that. Um, but she's telling me there's nothing glaring, there's nothing that's out of line there. Um, so I think everything's pretty straightforward. We did buy, um, if we go to the bond report, um, can we approve these all as one chairman or not? Or do you want to approve them?
And they're just for informational, we don't need to approve them.
Okay, and then, uh, just on the bond report, we did, uh, did a little remodeling or, or reassignment of spaces in the, uh, super tenant's office. And then also Mr. Bush, he did some stuff in a, um, common room out at the elementary. And we bought some chairs, uh, out of those bond proceeds yet. So that's how that changed a little bit. We don't want to skip over those yet. Um, again, I don't think there's anything that's glaring, um, in any of those reports.
All right, any questions for Superintendent Zell? Moving on, elementary principal report. We'll ask our principals to use his consensus response.
Uh, item number one, enrollment, we stayed the same over the last, uh, basically the last three months. So we're at three sixteen K through six, total pre-K through six, we're at three seventy-five. So stable and consistent there. Item number two, we had our Title One Reading Buddies. That was held on March fifteenth from, uh, in the morning. Uh, huge, uh, turnout for that. So I'd like to, uh, thank Mrs. Big and Mrs. Miller, uh, for the work with the Reading Buddies and the Title Program. And then Kayla Heller for their, her work with the book fair. Um, and I'll talk a little bit more about book fair as we go along. But that was a huge success. Uh, thank you to everybody involved. Uh, math curriculum review, we met today. We had subs for five of our teachers that are on our math committee. And we focused on one curriculum today and, and we took a deep dive into that. So we're reaching out to area schools or regional schools who are using the current curriculum, trying to get some feedback. Uh, leaning towards, uh, a, a certain vendor, uh, but we'll keep you guys updated as we move that process along. Um, but I can thank everybody on the math curriculum committee for their time put into it. Important dates, like I mentioned, the book fair, uh, this year ran March fifteenth through the seventeenth, which is, uh, basically two days shorter than we normally run it over years prior, but a huge success all in all. Um, we did very well with the, uh, if you look at dollars brought in, um, we did an outstanding job, uh, a lot of donations for books for students across the board disagree, agree, book fair. If you were there and if you have any comments in regards to it, just let me know that I, I will. MCA testing, and that is, uh, uh, attached to here. What I put there is our testing schedule. It's not a report or anything. It's just our testing schedule for, uh, MCA testing for grades three through six, reading, math, and science. So that will begin April third and run through, uh, that first week of May. So that was just for your information there. And just, uh, important bits, we will start fourth grade swimming coming up, uh, at the end of April. Uh, we started that, I think it was last year, getting back into routine and, uh, schedule providing our students with swimming. So that will be coming up. And item number five are February Students of the Month. Uh, you can see their names listed there. I won't go through the names. But congratulations, uh, to all the students in grades K through six. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Bushy.
Mr. Genarski. Yep. Uh, congratulations to all of our winter, uh, co-next curricular activities and teams, uh, that you may or may not have attended the PEP fest last week. Uh, it was a huge hit with our students and staff. Quarter three comes to an end, uh, March twenty-second. Uh, Todd, Ryan, and myself met with the Bagley Admin Team last week on the fourteenth. Uh, just kind of as a, you might say, inaugural conversation of getting to know who we are as well, but then also talking about the sports in which we co-op with them and, uh, what's been the standing agreements and so on. Um, March Madness also means testing season, and so the MCA test, as Dan mentioned, uh, will get started here as well. Uh, however, at the high school, we'll get along, uh, in my board report, I put the twenty-seventh, but I'm gonna adjust that to the twenty-eighth, that Tuesday because, um, we come off of a, a little bit of a break there, uh, this coming weekend. Uh, spring sports have all begun. Uh, Lana Becky, uh, continued to give some shape to our master schedule. Uh, the prom and after prom, I've been working with, uh, I know in my report that you probably are looking at, I have Michelle as Stacy Maniki, uh, who's our junior class advisor, uh. And with that, you know, we have made it very clear to our students who plan on attending prom or after prom that they need to be in good standing. That means academically, uh, that means that they are not carrying any detentions. They don't have any, uh, state high school league violations, all of those things that have not been, uh, dealt with. So absolute good standing in order to attend those, uh, items, those functions. Uh, a couple of graduation items as that's rolling up here shortly as well. Um, again, a student must have an cumulative GPA of a three point six, six, seven, uh, to receive that honor cord. Uh, the last two items there, I have spoken to our two seniors to, uh, see if they'd be interested in giving the, uh, speech at the, uh, graduation ceremony, and they've agreed. Uh, I've spoken with my juniors, uh, who would be our ushers, and they've agreed to do that as well. Um, enrollment numbers there, you can see have stayed, uh, relatively the same. And then my last point, uh, I want to thank Team Industries as they contributed twenty-five hundred dollars towards our purchase of the CNC, uh, CNC plasma cutter. And I think I talked about that to you probably one or two meetings prior. Um, we will now be moving forward with purchasing that item, uh, through the, uh, time of very consortium as well. So by, hopefully like July one, that new machine will be in our building.
Thank you, Mr. Genarski, Superintendent Zell.
So, um, I, I don't have a specific report, um, pretty much tonight's agenda would be the extent of my report coupled with, uh, the weekly updates that I provided last week. So we'll continue and move to the agenda.
I'll move on, eight point O personnel, approve or not approve the letter of retirement, uh, from Rhonda, Rhonda Linsett as a special education teacher at Molson as of May thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Believe her letter was in your board package. We're planning, is that part of, that is part of eight point three right there?
Okay. Yep. Okay, promotion to accept, we do that. Who's to approve the retirement?
Okay, we have a motion by Director Christian, seconded by Director Marcus to accept the letter of retirement for Rhonda Linsett, uh, effective May thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That is approved. Uh, eight point two is to accept, approve or not approve a letter of retirement for Michelle Bake as an elementary teacher at Molson as of May thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Her retirement letter was also in your package. Do you have any initial input on that?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay, a motion by Director Bossler, seconded by Director Marcus to approve the letter of retirement for Michelle Bake as of May thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That is approved.
Just one quick thing, we'd love to, just to thank all Rhonda and, uh, Michelle for their service. Huge importance of our elementary school and we'll be building this.
Sure.
Great, uh, moving on, eight point three, uh, is to authorize the following staffing positions. Elementary, special education teacher, health teacher at either point six or one point O FTE, and to repost the transportation director, um, position.
So we've, yes, okay, so we would be, um, the health, the health teacher, if you recall, we've had some discussion of that. Uh, this is formalizing that discussion, uh, where we would return Denise Stanky, uh, to a either, well, a point six, um, school nurse or a one point O school nurse. And the reason we were, we offered both of those, uh, uh, amounts of contract there would be, uh, we unders, we believe it might be difficult for us to find a point six health teacher. On the same token, we might find somebody that just wants to be a part-time health teacher. Uh, but if we, if we're able to post it both as a part-time and as a full-time, then that will dictate how much of a school nurse Denise Stanky is. Uh, at the very least, she, uh, currently she's teaching five sections of school. Um, uh, at the very most that she would teach next year would be two. The administrative recommendation is that she teaches none and is housed at the elementary building, which should allow us to have a reduction, uh, potentially in the para, um, what, what do we call that desk? Nurse's aid? Nurse's aid para position. So it's not a, obviously a dollar for dollar savings, but there would be some reduction in that expense there. So we will post it, our, with your approval, we'll post it both ways, see what comes and make our, uh, decisions based on the candidate that we select. And then the other two positions, uh, actually there, there probably is going to be, well, there is going to be more than one elementary teacher. We'll post it as elementary. Um, uh, and obviously take the candidates there and, um, reposting of the transportation director that continues to be a position that is priority. Um, um, we're hoping to post that and get another slate of candidates there, uh, that we can interview. And then, excuse me, eight point three point two is, uh, the special ed, uh, that is being created because of the retirement of Rhonda. So we'll be looking for approval to post those positions, of which April I will be on that tomorrow.
So just to clarify, yeah, what's the elementary teacher position? Not sure, looking at posting, is that, uh, her replacement of?
Oh, so, correct. Um, but it also is a, um, an opportunity for us to recruit candidates for an extra section of first grade next year based on enrollment.
Yeah, so we're looking for one, people two, two, so two, two elementary teachers.
Yeah, so if we're posting, we'll say elementary teacher.
Yeah, so.
That doesn't limit us to only hiring one.
Sure.
Yeah.
You have any comment and from the personnel committee side on that, Mike?
No, I think they, you know, what we discussed there is that's kind of what we're talking, just bringing it into the whole group and having them just discuss it a little bit.
All right, well taken. Uh, this, all these, these, um, posting of positions were discussed at a personnel committee here last week. Um, and this falls in line with the discussions at the meeting.
Yeah, Todd, just so, you know, with that, so the rest of the directors know is it was just a general discussion and then to bring it to everybody so they could talk about it then.
Yeah.
Hey, quick question. Did we not, um, vote at the last meeting for the transportation director?
Um, not at the last meeting, but obviously it was voted on back in November. This is more informational, just that we're going to repost it.
Got it, copy.
Yep.
No, I think we can approve them all together, they're all.
Make a motion to approve the posting of the presenting positions?
Okay, the motion by Director Bossler, seconded by Director Marcus to approve the posting of the four staff positions. We have listed in the agenda. Uh, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That is approved. Uh, eight point four, approve or not approve the hire of high school para Madison Norton?
We can, we can, uh, remove that, but she sent me a message late and said that she is fully in her candidacy for that.
Okay. Do you have to do anything, Mike, on that?
I mean, we could, no, I mean, if it's been polled, I mean, it's on the agenda, it probably should have been earlier, but, uh, no, I mean, there's really no action. We're not gonna not approve it.
Moving on, eight point five, discussion of high school overloads.
So, um, we've had some discussion of this at the personnel committee. Um, I, I just wanna, I just want to bring it to the attention of the full board that thi, this district has used high school overloads, um, to cover enrollment numbers or, or class size numbers in, in particular classes. Um, and, and we're on multiple years of doing that. Uh, there's some belief, there's some past belief, I guess, that the overloads were created to fix a situation maybe for a year, maybe for a couple of years as a bubble of kids went through. Um, but we are on multiple years now of using overloads in lieu of adding staff, I think. I guess I'll say it that way. And currently we have, in our English department, we have two teachers in the English department. Both of those are on an overload. That means they teach six or seven periods. We pay them accordingly, uh, for that extra period of, uh, teaching assignment. Uh, in our, in our, in our, uh, registration this year, there's a desire and, um, to add a class, i.e., um, yearbook into the curriculum offerings for, uh, in the English department so that students really are creating the yearbook rather than the advisor. Right now, we pay an advisor. She does ninety-plus percent of the yearbook, maybe ninety-nine percent higher. Maybe all, maybe a hundred percent. Um, and the yearbook is really, is a student, student, uh, project with, uh, obviously with advisory from, from an adult or a teacher. It, we have some, we, we, we roll that out as an option for students to sign up for. We have kids that are starting to be in it. Uh, and if we teach it by another English teacher, now we have one of our English teachers teaching seven of seven periods and the other one teaching six of seven periods. We may have an option to offer the yearbook to another staff member. That's a little bit, uh, undecided yet based off of, in moment, uh, and registration numbers. Currently, also we have a math, one of our two math teachers teaching an overload. And also we have a so, social studies teacher teaching an overload. Those maybe aren't as pressing. Um, the nature of, of English teachers is a lot of work, a lot of correcting, a lot of reading, a lot of. a lot of correcting, a lot of reading, a lot of papers exchanged. And we're concerned about burden for those two staff members, without question. And, and I, I'm, I looked at the language in our master contract, it vague at best, about, do we have right of assignment of an overload? Is it a teacher choice of an overload? I think that will get fleshed out a little bit through negotiations coming up. There's some language that needs to be worked on there, probably from both sides. So that's just the background of where we're at. And I, we just want maybe, if nothing else, just a, an opportunity to share that information with the board. We stand to answer any questions she might have in regard to that. And any, we would welcome any comments or thoughts around that topic. Don, am I capturing?
Yeah. The other thing that we need, also taken consideration, especially in the English department is so next year moving forward, we will have a senior class of approximately sixty students.
That's actually another one.
Right. Yep, and so all, twenty of those students will follow up for our college English lit, saying that correctly. And then the other forty will be in senior English, which means splitting that again. So even though those ladies are currently each on an overload, there is one overload coming naturally to them. That makes sense.
And then your book would be another one.
Another one on, so in essence, you're looking at four periods, if you throw your book in there, that will cover potential overloads, or what is overloads.
And the administrative recommendation would never be to have a teacher teach seven periods out of, seven out of seven? Yeah, that was a good, I had forgotten about the extra English assignment because of the large, what will be our senior class of year.
Any questions about overloads? Are we looking at? We discussed options for next year first? Are we looking at that a little bit?
We may, I guess we will likely be bringing back the recommendation in April to address this issue. But we would welcome any discussion or comments if this tide by the full board.
Eight point six, it's a discussion regarding a district instructional coach?
Yeah, and I just want to, again, this is just more informational than anything. One of the concerns, well, first of all, all of our teachers can stand to grow in instruction. And this isn't a new teacher thing or a veteran teacher thing, all of our teachers can stand to grow. And, and I truly believe there's a desire for that to grow. Some of that can be done in professional development days, but really where, where growth happens is working with somebody on instruction. In a perfect world, our two principles are instructional leaders, and they would be those people. We don't live in a perfect world, and our two principles are a myriad of responsibilities. And oftentimes, the responsibilities of student conduct, student behavior takes priority because it's in our face, it needs to be addressed in a, in a, in an instant. And what falls in the background are some of those opportunities to be in front of teachers or with teachers, not in front of, with teachers, coaching them, visiting with them, giving them some guidance, hearing what they're thinking, reflection, all kinds of things that would go into a coaching model. So with that, given the responsibilities that our current two principles have, and this is my idea, and I think there's some question about where did this come from? This is not an indictment at all on the teaching ability of our teachers, it's an opportunity to grow. And so I am just bringing this as a potential position that we, we could hire that would allow us to put somebody else with our, with our teachers to grow, grow instruction.
Know, knowing more about that now, too, I think in, in staff development meeting, we did have discussions in regards to peer, peer observations and admin observations and developing that program as well. So that's, that's another, another thing that we were.
And right now, that, that program is dedicated to first-year teachers or new teachers, or this would be, this would be all teachers?
You referred to the mentor, mentor program.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry to the classroom. Yeah, yeah. And what that, what we do with that information and how we can grow on that.
And an instructional coach, just, you know, for semantics, there, there's no, there's no, there's observations, excuse me, no.
Evaluation.
Evaluation, excuse me. There's no evaluation by that person. They're simply coaching one of their peers into opportunities and ideas for growth in instruction. So.
You have a question, Mr. Heltar?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was wondering if the instructional coach is a teacher-level position or an admin-level position?
We have not brought that to work yet.
All right, moving on, ten point O, operational, approve or not approve the 2023, 2024 school calendar?
Yeah, you have option A and option B in front of you, and you need to approve one of those options. I will walk you through those. Option A is, is, let me say it this way. The only difference between option A and option B is that January fifteenth. Today? January fifteenth, on option A is a teacher in-service date. It's not marked accordingly. It says that there are no school staff development, and on option B, January fifteenth would be a regular student date. What that, what that means is, if you look back in November, and I talked to you a little bit about this prior, is we want to look at a different approach to fall conferences. And what we'd be, what we would be presenting here in both of these calendars would be fall conferences on November eighth in the evening, so three thirty to seven or some, something there like that. And then all day Thursday would be conferences. Teachers would, would obviously see that be a workday, but we would have, not have students that day. And then the entire district, it's Friday, November tenth, as a day off. In the spring of the year, we stay with our traditional conferences that we have now, and those are in, help me, gentlemen, March, March twentieth, where it would be just the, it'd be an early out date, but then it would also be evening conferences. Those two evenings count as a day towards teachers' one eighty day, one eighty goal. If we were to go with option A, it does dictate one less student date. From what we currently have had, we've had one hundred and seventy-two student days historically. This would be one hundred and seventy-one student days, it would still equate to one hundred and eighty staff days, which is in the master contract. And the master contract reads up to one hundred and seventy-two student days. Either one seventy-one or one seventy-two will meet all our state requirements for graduation, et cetera. One sixty-five is the state minimum, so we're well above that. So really, in an attempt to try to alter our, our conferences, we really want to approach it this way in November. This is both calendar committee and staff development input into this. If we keep everything the same from that point on in the calendar year, we would lose one student date. So option B brings back that student day and eliminates a, a staff-only day on January fifteenth. Is that confusing? I'm trying not to. Yes?
Yeah.
It is confusing?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm comparing to last year, I just noticed that the, the conferences are now after the end of the quarter.
Yes, that was also, yeah, that was also a decision by staff, input from staff and the professional, and the staff development committee as well. It was, some of the discussion was the elementary thought the secondary wanted it in October, and the secondary thought the elementary wanted it in October. And when we got both groups in the same room, we realized that everyone was supportive of the later conference. In particular, we have open house in August. And so we've seen, all of our teachers have seen their kids and their families, and then we were coming back right away in October with another opportunity for that, and we thought there, there, there's general support to move that into November.
Is there a recommendation from that, on which version? Did the calendar committee come back?
Yeah, it was a option A, that was calendar committee. And option A, obviously, not obviously, but option A is the recommendation. But we wanted to bring a one hundred and seventy-two student day option to the board as well, which is consistent with what's been done in the past. And that's option B.
Well, it was, it was recommended by the committee. That's quite, quite the undertaking as far as coming up with a calendar. I am gonna make a motion to accept option A.
Yes, I did that.
Okay, the motion by Director Christian, seconded by Director Bossler to approve a school calendar, option A, for the upcoming twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That is approved. Item ten point two, is approve or not approve to seek bids for a handicap school bus?
Right. Partway through the year this year, we received a student from another district. But the fam, I mean, family, we receive a family, not just a school, into our school district that is wheelchair-bound. And we have a handicap bus that also got pulled out of the back end of the garage a little bit, and the bus certifier that comes to us from, we're in Erskine, said, I can certify this bus for this year, but I cannot certify it beyond this year. It has to do with the lift system. It's not up to barn. There's some safety features there that new buses have. He has the ability to grandfather through your, but he cannot certify beyond that. So we're in need of a handicap bus. We do have money. Line item money has left its reputation. Line item for, for us to purchase probably a used bus. We've done a little bit of homework, and there are a few options out there, but we would want to bid this because of the expenditure amount. We have about eighty thousand dollars remaining in the line item there. We believe that we can find, or that we can find something very close to that amount to purchase, and we would buy that if, if approved. We would bid it and then purchase it yet this school year, or yet this fiscal year, out of the current budget.
Make a motion to approve, to seek bids for a handicap school bus.
I'll say.
Okay, the motion by Director Christian, seconded by Director Munter to approve for superintendent's, to seek bids for a new handicap school bus. Is there any further discussion on that?
Edie, I've got a question. Realize it's just seeking bids at this time, do we have a size that we're looking at? Are we gonna?
One that we, that we've done a little homework on, the size, two pieces of size. They are full-size buses, but because of the handicap, you know, the capacity has shrunk. But they both have, are the ones that we've done some homework on, have the capacity to carry two handicap wheelchair-bound students, or riders, I guess. Wouldn't have to be students necessarily, but riders. So that's kind of what we're looking at, that seems to be industry way now that to allow yourself to have two versus the one, just for whatever situation might come. As well as, Gene tells me that, you know, we could use that bus on, for different purposes as well. It wouldn't strictly have to be, but it would be on a route on a daily basis to, it would manage the route with the child, that the child is on.
Okay, no, thanks.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That is approved. Ten point three, Stein busing contractors.
Yeah, I was approached by Stein here about three weeks ago, probably. They're wondering what we're going to do for next year, they're wondering if we have a desire to contract with them again. Their pricing will remain the same for next year. So our costs would be calculated the same way they're calculated now. They're not holding us over barrels to make a decision, but they want to have some idea what, what they're gonna need to do for us next year. It's, without question, it would be less expensive for us to hire our own bus drivers. We do have enough buses, if we were to take those two bus routes back, I did check with Gene about that. We definitely have enough vehicles to, to, to take care of our own busing needs. I think what I heard today a little bit with the financial presentation that we heard is as a district, we've always offered eight bus routes. We have less kids today than we did years ago. That might be something that we need to look at before we commit to eight bus routes. Do we need, I'm sure it's nice, there's no question, I'm sure it's nice, kids ride less than thirty more routes. But is that, is that what we need to be doing as a district? So my, my thinking after processing this almost as the meeting goes on is that that might be some work for us to do before we make a decision on how far, how far we go with an outside provider.
And the transportation committee? Delved into that possibly even after, if we get a transportation director?
Yeah.
Is there a drop date date for Stein?
No.
Nobody?
I just told her that I would connect with her after our meeting tonight, and so I'll have the communication with her yet this weekend, and talk with her, just tell her what we're looking at. If she gives us a drop date obviously, then we'll have to, we'll have to, you know, roll that into our decision-making.
Any input on that? Any kind of various discussion?
Pine to Prairie, I've shared with the board is that we've looked at possibly lease letting a space there at the lower level of the Prairie Pines, Pine to Prairie, Prairie Pines Childcare Center. We, we looked at all options. Mr. Bush, he thought there's a possibility that we could move our floors over there because of a room upstairs that would potentially take one of our four classrooms, and then the space downstairs. Found out from Prairie Pines that that upstairs room is not going to be available to us. So it would be putting, creating two classrooms in the basement. Square footage-wise, I think you could just say, there's not square footage, but it would put in some walls going up and stuff. Then we did a little more digging in our BPK, four-year-olds, and help me, Dan, before he, there's some restriction, state restrictions about not being in a basement.
You have to be, to receive the funds, you have to be on a main floor, first floor, structured.
Close to drop off, close to pickup.
Yeah, it would just cause lots of issues, and we can lose some of that BPK funding, which we, we don't want to do. And the goal is, they have all of our kids in the elementary building. And that's. And that's where we're at right now.
So that push is probably, if we continue with this discussion, it would mean moving our ECFE program that this house at the high school could go there, the restrictions there are different. And so that would be an opportunity for us to move that classroom that's here over to Prairie Pines. So kind of looking at if that's something that the district still, or the board still wants me to pursue, try to get some numbers around what that would mean for us. I don't think there's any question, the space down there would be wonderful for our, for that program. It's, it's larger than what we currently have. They have all the furniture. There's sinks, low sinks down there, there's low toilets down there. It's, it's set up modestly for what we would want. But it will come with some level of cost. So I'm very willing to continue to pursue that with your direction.
We're just discussing it now, we can't really, so we'll have to look at something.
Yeah.
So where does that leave us with room at the elementary?
Where, where it leaves us is this, is if we, it's been some years, but we had a smaller classroom space that's used for programming right now that was used as a classroom. So if we take in, add another section of, we had got three sections, the second grade, three sections of first grade. We could take the third section of second grade and lower the number, like 12 to 15 students in that room. And that room could house that third section. That would keep our fours in their current classrooms. And then what we're looking at is our foyer space outside our gym. If we add a wall there, that would be just for, for, yeah, something to think about.
Yeah, it'd be next to the area that the kids presented tonight. That little corner, that nook that they created. The current wall that goes, looks into the courtyard. There's an opportunity to create a space there.
So we can, just by adding a wall there, we could create an educational space, which can house one of our programs, where we can just do some, some moving of current programs, and then be able to house everything we're currently, that we have this year. We wouldn't have to ask someone to go to a different environment. And it benefits our, I mean, when we talk about the basement, that Prairie Pines, very nice space for ECFE. Much better than what they would have to. We appreciate the space here, don't get me wrong there, but that is more conducive to early childhood. Restrooms, that's an issue here, mixing in with the high school system. So that is something to really consider moving forward.
But in a nutshell, Molson could, could, we could fit everyone in there with the added section of second grade, first grade, I guess it's added section.
And I don't want to say, it's not a long-term solution, but we can do it.
Just have a discussion, a discussion item for athletic department and management marketing?
Yeah, and I'll make that quick, and actually, we, we need to gather some more information. Ryan's working on that. But just so you know, that we're going to start looking at how we, you know, the large floorboard that was purchased a couple of years ago. We're moving closer to, to using that as a revenue stream, creating some revenue stream from that. We're also looking at some different options for marketing and/or sponsorship of some different areas, which will allow us a revenue stream, which will then offset some of the enhancements that we need to make. For instance, the scores table in the gym is multiple years old, it's too small. But we want to, we want to create a revenue stream. Now, it might be some upfront knowledge by the district to purchase such a, that's just an example of an item. But then over the next three or four years, we would gather that money back via some marketing options that we have for different people, for different businesses in town. So it's just more informational for you today. We don't have a plan in place yet, we're working on that. We've got a couple of people in town here that have expressed interest in supporting us. A very major business in town is very much wanting to, to hook their wagon with us. And so we've been exploring those options and being, bringing back a plan for the board to approve down road.
All right. Moving on, 10.6, approve or not approve superintendent goals? In your packet?
I'd like you to speak to that.
This is what was discussed at our work session on Saturday. We put together an outline of goals for Superintendent Silk that he can strive for, and then that, that we can use to base his evaluation on, on evaluation time. Because I don't have a whole lot else, also that was discussed in our work session.
Does it look through, it looks appropriate to what we had discussed at the work session? I make a motion to approve the superintendent's goals.
Second. Seconded by Director Christian, seconded by Director Maniki, to approve the superintendent's goals as presented. Is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? I oppose. That is approved. 10.7.
So the, also at the, obviously at the work session here, wherever you were there, we made some changes there. Allison was gracious enough to, to put those edits into the, to the current strategic plan. And those are represented, Allison, with strikeouts and additions, et cetera. And you had that in your packet. So I think we're just looking for approval, and then we will, we will craft and draft the final of that. And then April will get that on the website, et cetera. And, and also, we're going to post some of those, we're going to make some larger posters of that and post them around the different buildings.
I second.
I have a motion by Director Munter, seconded by Director Christian, to approve the strategic plan revision. Is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? I oppose. That's approved. Moving on, approve or not approve the gym floor resurface?
Those, there's two bids in your, in your, oh, here's the background. Gym floor got redone inadequately, I'll just say that. The product that was, or the finish that was provided began flaking away partway through the basketball season. We did a short fix on it with the help of Company of Bemidji, fixed on it. It got us through the balance of the year. Their recommendation, and then actually those of these two companies that looked at the floor as well, said that is not, you need to go back to square one, full sand, and start it again. Otherwise, you will continually have, we would probably resurface like we typically would. We'd make it through the volleyball season, probably. But then at some point, it's going to start to give way again. Cause slipperiness, which is a safety issue. And so though we know that the district spent money on this a couple of years ago, we're there again, and it's not, we're not excited about that or happy about that, but it's our reality. We have reached out to other schools, and we've also reached out to James Maniki here. Bemidji has reached out to different providers. And these two companies are basically the only two that schools use of the people that we've reached out to. These are the two reputable companies that do this kind of work. We did not use either of these companies last night. FLR Sanders, Don, has a lot of, worked, has done a lot of work with them. Obviously, you can see they're quite spending, but the product or the service they provide is second to none.
Yeah, when I was the athletic director in Kirsten, that's who we used. And again, took that floor down to Bearwood, and they did a fabulous job. When I was in Minnaga, it was a brand-new floor they came in. Any little thing that, as we walked through and found, like, hey, here's a, maybe a hole that was left from when they marked out the floor, whoever, will be right there. And they were, next day, it was, we're right there, taking care of things. So both cases, my experience at FLR Sanders, they're, they're top shelf. They have their own art department, and so they can mock up however we would like to see the floor. Whereas I don't know what the other company.
They use a third party.
Yeah, they use a third party, so.
I think the Johnson floor, though, is, is very reputable as well. In my experience, Grand Forks Public Schools, which is numerous gyms every summer, that's the provider, that's the contractor that provides those. We also know that they've been used throughout other parts of the state, and with, with a lot of success as well. And unfortunately, timing is a little bit precious right now because their schedules fill on. So we really need some direction tonight, if at all possible.
On that first one, is the option to restart with home graphics and existing enhancement, is that in on the total? That $3,772?
No, that would be a half.
Oh, the price difference, $13,000 in between the two. Is it?
This says artwork and repairs, not food or health. Do we have any idea on the time to scrub? Is that? On the Johnson one? Is that pretty much, we get the same floor that we have now?
Though we're going to actually make a few changes in there. That, that's maybe not an absolute solider, but it's, it'd be pretty close to that, and this could be considerably less than FLR Sanders. So Greenhouse Lobo in the center of the court, was erroneously put in at the size that it is. So if we are able to go to this full sand, sanding down, we will bring back a mid-court, center court logo that's much larger. There also was some lines put into that, that in error were approved to go in, that with width and color that, that were not desired by the athletic department. Our, our, our hope is that we focus, or that the focus of the floor will be the volleyball court and the basketball court. And all other lines will be of a color, or size, or just corners, to mark corners, so that those are not dominating the floor, being too busy. And really, the two courts you'll see will be the basketball court and the volleyball court. So this is, I mean, that, that's not why we're doing this. We're doing it because of the flaking of the, of the seal. But when we have this opportunity, we want to get it right this time with some markings. I'm confident in Johnson floor standing. I am confident in them.
I guess without knowing any specific differences between the two, it's hard to justify a $13,000 price difference.
Yeah, I don't know, Don, if you can speak to that, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
No, I mean, I, I know they do quality work. I'll be honest, when I saw the bid, I was a bit surprised, just because years ago, when I utilized it, it wasn't that expensive, but that was years ago again.
I mean, if both companies are used by multiple school districts and have had good results.
They're doing the same thing.
And they're doing the same thing.
Yeah.
To me, a $13,000 savings is a $13,000 savings, yeah.
And actually.
And maybe.
Actually, we got more.
Exactly, more. For that price.
What's the guarantee on the floor?
Ten years, they say. But I'm sure that other providers said the same thing.
Yeah, so are they going to stand behind it, or could we possibly be in the same boat?
Well, I guess time will tell on that, but we certainly don't expect, based on the reputation of these two companies. I'll, I'll say that what I, what I learned from the, from the company that was chosen before, the reputation was about what we got. Now, I don't know what guarantees there are.
So is the old floor that we have issues with, is that a product issue or the applicator?
The belief is it was application. From these two companies, powers of life. See if we can get some kind of warranty period specified in our purchase order agreement or whatever we. I don't know, Don, I haven't done floors for twenty years, so.
Yeah, I think, yeah, that can come up differently in conversation in the sense of like, all right, if we're having issues, I'll go to the K P G back up here, and I'll get what do they cover. But like you say, in both cases, when I've been involved, it's, you know, you do, you go through the floor. You check it, you spot it, put tape down wherever you feel the need. And again, I've only dealt with that floor. Even if it's been a year later, they come up and take care of what they need to. You know, it's their reputation. I think Johnson's is the same way. I mean, they, they understand they're, they're leading the way in the industry, and it's their reputation.
But we can check into somewhere, even on a warranty. If we get something in writing that says, you know, they're their responsible, they'll come back. We'll try.
With that, if FLR had a ten-year warranty and Johnson did not.
Yeah.
Would that, would that make a difference? And I, I think it's, I think it's important information to have.
That special meeting we're going to have is going to be busy. That agenda is growing. We could turn that around pretty quick. Better information.
Yeah.
So I'm comfortable doing that, Scott, that makes good sense. Do you want to table it?
Take a motion to table for this full information.
Mike Roberts rules on that. It's tabled.
Yeah, it can be tabled or postponed. I mean, we're not in that, that far, so.
Can it be brought up at a special word meeting?
Yeah, as long as it's on the, you know, we can.
Okay, all right. We'll get to work on that this weekend.
I have a motion by Director Christian to table the motion to a future meeting. Do you need a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Director Christian, seconded by Director Marcus, to table this motion. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? I oppose. That motion is tabled. 11.0, reports. Negotiations, or Personnel Committee met with the certified staff negotiations. Folks, tonight, I set basic ground rules for negotiations, and they presented us with some of their language proposals. We have decided not to address financial stuff until after we get an answer from the state on funding. And we have decided to meet again April 13th, where we will discuss some of their language proposals. We'll have some of our language proposals. some of our language proposals at that time as well. Uh, we will need to schedule a personnel committee. Prior to that, we were thinking the week of the tenth, Mike. So if you can take a look at your calendar and get back to us. Tenth of April.
Yeah, I'll let you know, Dean.
Yeah. April nineteenth. Next board meeting is April seventeenth. Anyone have anything else?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we should get a special board meeting on the calendar for Marcus. It'd be seven AM, seven thirty AM. It would be short. We're acting on the, the two trips and potentially acting on the floor. If we leave here and then try to schedule it, it, it might be by the time we get a schedule, it might, we might have lost our, no time.
And you're looking at the end of the month.
Yeah. I, I was kind of confused on my registration. I was too. When I looked at the information here, it says, uh, March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three.
See, that's what it says, twenty-two.
Yeah, this was, uh, for a hundred fifty dollar scholarship for each person that they signed up by March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. It might be something different. I just don't know. We'll need to meet first year of those per trip as well, um, to get some facts with their name is the one that's in that.
So you want to tentatively schedule one for Monday?
Monday, twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh?
That's a good date. I'm, I'm out of the district Tuesday, Wednesday, down to Capitol. So I would be Monday, why could you Tuesday morning too, I guess? Either works for me.
We go on Tuesday?
Okay.
Monday morning?
Does that work for you, Mike?
Yeah, Tuesday I'm out of town.
Good to be noon. Do you have more time to lunch?
Eleven thirty, twelve.
I mean, I can, I can meet patients around too.
No, I probably will.
Six thirty?
Well, I'm just wondering Thursday, the thirtieth, see if that's an option.
I, I have to run to my car. But if we did I, then we can do it.
I'm, I'm not.
Look, we go at six thirty AM on? Monday, the twenty-seventh?
Up here. I'm already at work.
All right, well, tentative was.
Well, we need to go postal.
Yep.
So post a special board meeting. We'll provide the agenda. Basically, we need class trips and the flooring. That's it at this point in time. We didn't table it, you know, it could be. Six thirty AM, Monday, the twenty-seventh.
With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Director Bosler, seconded by Director Marcus to adjourn. Is anyone opposed to that? Hearing none, my man must consent, we are adjourned at nine thirty-five PM.
Say, Dean?